Will and enable, if you would stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge of flag, flag. Lord will come to you this morning asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens of Henry County. Amen.
Our pledge releases to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any injustice or fraud.
Good morning, and welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners' meeting, nine o'clock a.m., Tuesday, May the 6th. On the agenda, you'll notice that under nine, public safety D, that will not be heard. I understand applicant has withdrew his request for a, an appeal. I find the other in order. If somebody will move, we adopt the agenda as published.
So moved.
Have a motion District 3.
Okay.
Motion District 1. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we have a proclamation from Ms. Beers, 100 years old. And I have to tell you that if you went to school from the 40s to, I don't know when she retired, but just about all my kids have Ms. Beers. I have Ms. Beers. She stayed in the school system for a long, long time. And we're going to honor her for being 100 years old, and in about 40 years, I'm going to let y'all honor me for being 100.
Ms. Beers is not with us this morning, but her great-grandniece Donna Holder is here to receive this proclamation. And this is a proclamation in recognition of Agnes Beers on the grand occasion of her 100th birthday. Whereas, born May 10th, 1914, to Daisy and Charles S. Fisher, Agnes Beers was one of five siblings born at the family home place at the corner of Snapping Shoals Road and River Road in Ola, Georgia. And she married her late husband Fred L. Beers, Jr., in 1950, at a chapel in Rome, Georgia, and they lived in McDonough, Georgia, throughout their devoted union of 38 years. And whereas, on Saturday, May 10th, 2014, Mrs. Beers celebrates her 100th birthday with beloved family and friends at a reception in her honor at the American Legion Hall in McDonough, and since this is her 100th birthday, she has been privileged to witness events most of us only read about in history books. And whereas, Mrs. Beers graduated McDonough High in 1931, and then entered the University of Georgia in 1933, receiving her doctorate in home economics. She taught school from 1935 to 1978, beginning her career teaching 5th grade in Clay County, and from there, she came to head the homemaking department at Henry County High School in 1942. Mrs. Beers was in charge of home economics at Berry College in 1946, and then at the Pepperell School in Lyndale for several years. After her marriage to Fred Beers, she returned to Henry County as head of the homemaking department, and spent the last 12 years of her career as the food service director for Henry County school system. She was a respected teacher in the Henry County Public Schools for 28 years, and enjoyed her time spent teaching and guiding young people. And whereas, she also enjoyed showing dogs, being a master gardener, collecting fiesta ware, cooking, bird watching, and her work as a member of the American Legion Post 55 Auxiliary. And whereas, today, she still enjoys traveling and volunteering her time, talents, and energy to her family and community, being a member of the St. Joseph's Episcopal Church, and cheering on the Georgia Bulldogs and the Atlanta Braves. Whereas, this gracious lady has reached a spectacular milestone as her 100th birthday establishes her among the ranks of Georgia's revered centenarians, and her remarkably long life is a source of joy and gratitude for her family and friends, and deserves acclaim from the citizens of Henry County and the state of Georgia. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that they offer sincerest congratulations to Mrs. Agnes Beers on the occasion of her 100th birthday, and wish her continued good health and happiness as she embarks on her second 100-year journey. And on behalf of all Henry County citizens, this proclamation is offered to an extraordinary lady with the warmest personal regards. This 6th day of May 2014, signed by Chairman Tom Yenn Smith, Witness Shay Mathis, County Clerk.
I understand that Ms. Beers is...
Great niece.
Not here, but her great-great-grandniece is here.
Donna Holder.
Yes. So let's have a picture with her.
Okay. Okay. This is a proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month. Whereas, the month of May has traditionally been designated as Older Americans Month, a time to appreciate and celebrate the vitality and aspirations of older adults and their contributions to our communities and their influence in our lives. And whereas, this year's theme is Safe Today, Healthy Tomorrow, which highlights the importance of focusing on injury prevention and safety to encourage older adults to protect themselves and remain active and independent for as long as possible. And whereas, Henry County has approximately 30,000 residents aged 16 and older who have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas, we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, as we are committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives. Whereas, our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals, both young and old, by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, and helping them take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of May 2014 be known as Older Americans Month, and we urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to this community. This 6th day of May 2014, signed by Chairman Tom Yenn Smith, witnessed by Shay Mathis, County Clerk.
Does anybody here represent, yes, we need to get a picture of this as well, too. Letter of appreciation from GBI to Detective Tom Stott of the Henry County PD, Chief Nichols.
That's a tough act to follow there. Detective Stott, if you would, please come up.
Letter of appreciation from GBI to Detective Tom Stott of the Henry County PD, Chief Nichols. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. That's a tough act to follow there. Detective Stott, if you would, please come up. It gives me great pleasure at this time to be allowed to recognize a very significant personality in the Henry County Police Department. Detective Stott, I've actually known him for going on 23 years now, and he and I many, many years ago, since we're on this older theme, I won't go talk about how many years it's been, but he's been back in Criminal Investigation Division for quite some time, and he does a great job. I think before that, he was in Uniform Patrol, and before that, he was in DUI unit called Prowl that we had many, many years ago. But I want to take this opportunity to bring it to your attention, something that Detective Stott was involved in. Detective Stott is in Internet Against Children crime, and Detective Stott was asked by the GBI to participate in the Multi-Agency Georgia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force's Operation Broken Heart. The task force netted 14 arrests of individuals seeking to have sex with children in the metro Atlanta area. The Director of GBI Vernon M. Keenan expressed his appreciation to Detective Stott for his unsurpassed dedication and efforts in this endeavor. And if you please, I'm going to go ahead and read the letter that the Director of the GBI sent to me. Dear Chief Nichols, on behalf of the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, I extend my sincere appreciation to Detective Tom Stott for his participation in the Georgia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, Operation Broken Heart. Detective Stott was an integral team player whose efforts contributed to the success of this operation, which resulted in the arrest of 14 individuals who were seeking to have sex with children. I am very proud of the multi-agency participation of Operation Broken Heart. The dedication, knowledge, and expertise of the law enforcement officers and support personnel who participated in this endeavor was unsurpassed. With professional, hard-working participants such as Detective Tom Stott, we are better able to protect children in Georgia. Signed, Vernon M. Keenan. Thank you. I would also like to recognize a good group of hard-working detectives that came on Detective Stott's behalf today to support him in this endeavor also.
Can we get a picture with him?
Sure.
I appreciate it. Presentation of awards to Officers of the Henry County Department, Chief. At this time, I'm going to ask our Henry County Heat Unit to come on up here.
Again, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the hard work and effort of our Henry County Heat Unit, which is part of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. They work very hard at making our highways and roads safe here in Henry County. When we're at home, asleep, with our heads on the pillow, that's when they're out there doing the most diligent work they can. In March, they were honored for the second time by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety and Mothers Against Drunk Driving for their diligent efforts in keeping DUI impaired drivers off our roadways, and if they are on our roadways, catching, apprehending them, and prosecuting Mothers Against Drunk Driving of Georgia, or MAD, held its 10th Annual Law Enforcement Golden Shield Honor Awards banquet at the Georgia International Convention Center in Atlanta. On March 27, 2014, the Henry County Police Department garnered numerous accolades, among them DUI Agency Hero and Statewide Agency of the Year Award for the second year in a row. The Department has enjoyed a longtime partnership with GOHS in enforcing speeding, safety restraint, and DUI laws on the county's local, state route, and interstate roadways. Through continued support from Governor's Office of Highway Safety, officers heavily promote educational awareness for motorists through safety road checks, operate priority patrols in areas noted for injuries and fatalities, provide school and community support visits, and act as instructors in the agency's Citizens Police Academy. The Department's continued efforts to enforce Georgia laws and keep our roadways safe for citizens, commuters, and visitors has led to recognition by MAD for the last six years. In addition to Statewide Agency of the Year Award for 2013, we are proud to congratulate the following officers for DUI arrests, pin recognition by MAD for their exceptional achievements. The red pin for making 150-plus DUI arrests was awarded to Officer Timothy Williams, who had 162 arrests to his credit in 2013. Officer Williams was awarded Statewide Officer of the Year. The silver pin is for making between 50 and 99 DUI arrests. Was awarded Officer Robert Butera and Kelly Horn with 96 and 74 DUI arrests, respectively. Officer Butera is actually on his honeymoon, as we speak. The bronze pin was for making 25 to 49 DUI arrests, and was awarded to Sergeant Scott Cumby, Officers Wesley McNoor, Parks McIntosh, and Officers Clint Jones with 46, 43, 47, and 32 arrests, respectively. I'm very proud of this unit. I'm very proud of what they do. We have consistently strived to reduce our fatalities and our injuries that result of accidents and impaired drivers. But I reached out to our county solicitor, Trey Pipkin, because of the difficulty, not only in apprehending DUI drivers, but prosecuting DUI drivers. Over the years, the difficulty in prosecuting these cases have increased tremendously, but Trey Pipkin, Solicitor General, sent a letter since he couldn't be here. The letter states to the Henry County BOC and Chief Keith Nichols, "It is my pleasure to author this letter of support recognizing the Henry County Police Department for its outstanding commitment to quality service in the area of DUI law. Your recent acceptance of DUI Agency of the Year from MAD at their annual Law Enforcement Golden Shield Honor Awards banquet is an accomplishment to be proud of. What is more impressive is being your second year in a row to receive such an award. As you're aware, I have been prosecuting criminals in Henry County for nearly a decade, and having prosecuted everything from homicides to speeding tickets, I can tell you without reservation that DUI investigation and prosecution is the most difficult work to consistently produce a quality product. The people of Henry County should be proud of the level of service they receive in the area of DUI police work from the Henry County Police Department. I truly believe the most effective vehicle or homicide prevention plan any community can have is a strong DUI prosecution plan. The Henry County Police Department has served as a dedicated partner to this end and remains expert force throughout Georgia as a leader in DUI investigation. Once again, words cannot express how valuable your efforts are at keeping the people of this community safe as they travel our roads of our county. On behalf of the courts and the people of Henry County, thank you. Very sincerely and respectfully, yours, Trey A. Pipkin." Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to recognize these officers and the work they've done.
Chief Lacy.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, I bring a resolution before you for the acceptance of a donation and renovation from Charmin Corporation for the bathroom, the men's room at Henry County Fire Department Station 1, and for 960 rolls of Charmin toilet tissue. This is part of a donation that Charmin does throughout the 50 states in the United States, and we were one of the 50 fire departments that was picked for the donation, and one of five fire departments in the country that was picked for the renovation. So you have in your packet there the, some of the before and after pictures of the renovation. I'll just put that up there for that, but it shows a little bit of the quality of work that was done at Station 1. What's significant about Station 1 is that that's our busiest fire station. It has our most personnel. It gets our most use. There's about 15 folks there every day, 365 days a year, and as you can imagine, it gets a lot of use. So we're very appreciative of this donation.
We have a resolution in the book authorizing the Henry County Fire Department to accept the donation of 960 rolls of Charmin toilet paper. Somebody would move to approve? Have a motion District 1, second from District 3. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you, Chief.
I neglected to mention that we were submitted for that award or donation by one of the, by the fiance of one of our firefighters, so that was kind of a surprise thing for us.
Next, we have a resolution requesting authorization of payment for the recertification fees for the Fire Department, Chief.
This is an expenditure cure for the recertification of our firefighter EMTs and our firefighter paramedics, so that they can continue to practice medicine under our medical control. This is a budgeted expense that happens every two years.
Anybody have any questions or comments? It'd be an amount of $18,675. Has somebody considered the resolution in the book?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District 2 to approve the resolution as shown in the book. Have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, resolution requesting authorization to use asset forfeiture seized funds for educational costs. Major Keith Goen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Come before you today in reference to a resolution to authorize, request authorization to use narcotic seized funds as part of our educational and training costs to send Sergeant Ron Patton to attend the Command College in Columbus, Georgia. The Command College, in conjunction with the PMP program, as well as the FBI National Academy, have been a priority for Chief Nichols since taking office, and he continues to try to mentor and to educate the supervisors and potential supervisors within the department. The total cost of attending the Command College over a two-year period is $18,000, which broken down is $11,600 for tuition, $4,140 for housing, and $2,100 for meals. The Police Department requests to use authorized seized funds for this purchase, which is in conjunction with state law, and this is appropriate and legal expenditure under federal guidelines. Sergeant Ron Patton would enter into an agreement in addition to this to remain at the Henry County Police Department for a minimum of three years following the completion of the Command College. In addition to this, I'd just like to mention to you what specific courses are covered in this, so you'll know exactly what the money's going towards. Leadership in public administration, human resources management and development, fiscal management and public finance, legal issues and trends in public safety administration, strategic planning and policy development, and those are just examples of what he'll be learning over the two-year period where he will be in attendance. Just request a use and authorization of seized funds for this continued education.
Somebody move? We consider adopting the resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing use of this asset forfeiture seized fund. Have a, I'm sorry, have a comment from District 12?
I have a question. Ron Patton has been with the police department some 16 years, I think.
Yes, sir.
Plus or minus.
And has earned his bachelor's degree while attending, while working at Henry County Police Department as well.
Now, he's my son-in-law. Do I recuse myself from this vote? Do I need to leave the room, or just recuse myself? Leave the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's rock and show that Commissioner Bowman recused himself. Now, we have a motion to accept the resolution. So moved. We acknowledge District 5. District 5 made the motion by the uplifting of his hand. Now, we have a second. Second from District 1. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Reed, you can come back. Next, we have a resolution requesting approval of a contract with the Department of Human Resources, and Diane Reed. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman. As stated, I'm here to request approval of a contract with DHS for CSBG funding. This funding will be used to provide services to the senior adults of Henry County that meet the low-income guidelines.
It's an amount of $102,531.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Excuse me, correction. That was last year's amount. This year's amount is $112,161.
I stand corrected, and thank you. We have a question or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book with the Board of Commissioners for authorization to apply for the Community Service Block Grant Contract. Have a motion from District Three?
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Risk Management. Next, we have a request to amend an ordinance regarding parks prohibited acts. Our Director of Risk Management, Mr. Vincent Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. What I brought is a request to approve an amendment to an ordinance which is Section 3-13-4-A, and also -8-A regarding parks and the prohibited acts at those parks. Just a little background here, it's just to provide some guidance or some other directives as required for insurances and special events to be held at Henry County Parks or other recreational areas that will require the use of fireworks, explosives, or firecrackers. The aforementioned recommendations are in an effort to alleviate the repercussions faced by Henry County as a result of incidents at a special event to be held by Henry County Park or other recreational areas, and it would also require the use of fireworks, explosives, and/or firecrackers. It is my recommendation that any private entity seeking approval from the Henry County Board of Commissioners to use a Henry County park or recreational area for a special event with the use of fireworks, explosives, or firecrackers, provide documentation of effective comprehensive general liability insurance in the amount of $4 million. It is also recommended that the private entity names as additional insured the Henry County Board of Commissioners its officers, employees, and agents, and any other public entities impacted by the requested event with the waiver of segregation in regards to workers' compensation. Henry County Board of Commissioners, at its discretion, may waive or reduce specific insurance requirements for special events.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Yes, sir.
Vincent, I'd come and seen you yesterday about these two issues on the agenda today, and I'd ask you, because I know there's, I'm big on benchmarking what other communities are doing. I do it for my business. I find areas that are doing things really well, and instead of reinventing the will, I try to go see what they're doing to make sure that we're in line, so there's no unintended consequences. City of Atlanta has the Braves that do fireworks after every game. Cobb County was soon to be the home of the Braves. They have fireworks, you know, they'll soon have fireworks, and I'm sure a lot of these communities also have fireworks to celebrate, you know, the Fourth of July and other things. Do you have some comparisons, so we know if there's $4 million's in line with the other communities, or if we're putting ourself, I'm all about keeping the county safe, but I want to make sure there's no unintended consequences, that we make ourselves so safe that nobody can do anything in the community that could add some quality of life and events that are good in the community? So do you have any feedback on that, because I'd kind of talk to you about it?
Okay. Well, with, in regards to fireworks itself, there is really not a precedent set throughout the state. They kind of lump it all together in one, in one kind of special gatherings, you know, special event type deal. But with what we had listed in the code of, in the Henry County Code of Ordinances, it initially spoke on the use of fireworks and explosives and those other devices, you know, being used at a Henry County facility. And what I took from using that is, I looked at what we had as our insurance, as our general, our total premium of what we would pay out, per se, and in that, at our most dangerous thing that we would possibly be doing, whether it be a trench and insuring event or some other form of, in those lines, I don't think we would have blasting, per se, but we already covered for $4 million. Now, at its discretion, what I've, what I've listed here, and this can be tabled by the board.
Before you go too much further, I mean, what is the, what is Cobb County, Gwinnett County, and the City of Atlanta? Because those are the three that I had kind of mentioned to you yesterday. Do you have, because I'm sure I just can't show up with a box of firecrackers and start shooting those off.
No, sir, you cannot.
In any of those communities, so what are their requirements to, in Cobb County, City of Atlanta, and then Gwinnett County? I just want to make sure that we're staying within the benchmarks of what's reasonable in the metro Atlanta area.
Okay. Now, as far as fireworks, they don't have anything?
You don't, you don't have those numbers?
No, sir. But as far as their mass gatherings, I do have a different number for that.
Okay.
Vincent, a question for you.
At its discretion, the fee may be, or the insurance may be waived. What does that mean? It almost sounds like favoritism. You know, I don't like this group, so we're going to charge them $4 million, but this group may be okay, so we're going to lower it down to $2 million. So what does that mean?
Well, and it is at the discretion of the board, which I brought this to be tabled by the board. If, you know, if we don't want to go with $4 million, is at this time we can actually reduce this limit?
So basically, based on this, at the board's discretion, a group can come in and get $2 million the very next week after somebody was just required to give, show a $4 million policy, right?
At this time, yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? I have a question. Take a hypothetical situation. We have a vendor at a park, has fireworks, and they only, in like the last couple of years, they only required to carry $2 million. Okay, so something catastrophic happens with fireworks. It goes through the course, and the total liability damaged by courts was $7 million. Okay, if the vendor had $2 million, then who would, could you tell us who would pay up to $6 million?
We could possibly be held accountable for the other $4 million that's out there if it was up to $6 million. But in the event of that happening, the county also requires that vendor to have a form signed that state they hold the county, they hold the county held harmless, therefore kind of in some forms protecting us from further legal, legal, from further legal action. And one of the things that I have read and that I've been looking into is with some insurance companies or some of our vendors, they have what you call a per occurrence, and under that per occurrence, they may have, they may have one amount. So say per occurrence, they had $4 million. Well, then they also have a total aggregate. That total aggregate can be less than that $4 million, and that's based upon the fact because this is per event. So it's not, it's not the saying that every time they come, they have to have, you know, the $4 million for everything that they do with Henry County. It's just per that event that they have to have $4 million. Their total aggregate can be less than that $4 million. If that leaves, if that clears up some confusion.
Let me ask you a question to counsel. This whole harmless, if, for example, if the board waivers a $4 million down to $2 million, and then we have that whole harmless, is that something that would be enforceable in any event they had a significant lawsuit over the threshold?
Yes, whole harmless agreements are enforceable. They are as good as the entity who is standing behind the whole harmless agreement. So yes, that would be an added level of protection to the county that we would require regardless of the insurance. I think whether it's four or two, we always want to have the whole harmless as part of these arrangements.
So what this would do here, in my mind, it would, the count would be what our compensative is, is $4 million, and then if it was anything less than that, the board, like they have been in the past, is just reduce it to amount. Would that, would that be a true statement?
Well, in the past, there was no specific insurance requirement for the fireworks, so I think it was left up to the board's determination as to what insurance requirement it would impose. But as what is written, was proposed by Mr. Scott, yes, that would be the case. The $4 million would be the norm, and anything below that would be subject to the board's determination. I would recommend, I can talk to Vince about this, but there should be some standard guidelines to address what Commissioner Holmes said. You know, depending on the, I mean, if it's a huge, huge fireworks available or something really small, I think that that would be some benchmark that the commissioners could look at to determine whether or not a reduction was necessary, depending on the nature of the event.
So basically, what we're doing, we're considering approving an ordinance for the first time that will address fireworks only in a park. Is that basically what we're doing?
You're expanding your current ordinance on fireworks, because your current ordinance says that fireworks has to be, the use of fireworks has to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
And what Vincent has done is imposed an insurance requirement to that particular activity.
So what we're seeing, once we approve this, the board does not have to approve the use of fireworks, but the only involvement was if, if the vendor wanted anything less than a $4 million blanket, he would have to come to the board, not for the fireworks approval, but to reduce the amounts of liability.
No, sir. The vendor, it would still have to come before the board for approval of, as it's proposed, the vendor would still have to come for approval for that particular use.
For the fireworks?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? We have a question here from District One.
Yes, if somebody put on an event in one of our parks, and I think their liability would be minimum $4 million, and say, they contracted out the fireworks, and they had to be $4 million. And like Mr. Chairman asked, if we had something catastrophic where maybe we had a $7 million claim, could you go to the, to the people that put on the fireworks show and then go to the person that actually put on the event and claim that way instead of coming to try to get it from us?
What, excuse me, I'm sorry. The way the ordinance reads, it's the, the person or the entity that's doing the event, they are the ones that be required to have the $4 million policy. Now, the other person, if they vend out and they vend out those other contractors, then they are not required to have the $4 million. They are required to have, you know, liability insurance that is subject to whatever that vendor approves. It is the vendor or the leasing of the park that is required to have the $4 million.
Let me ask you this. If that whole harmless is exactly what you said, then an amount of insurance would be moot, no matter what the catastrophic liability would be. So we would not be held liable for any. Would that be correct?
Whole harmless and indemnification just means that, to the extent that the county would be found liable, that we could go after the vendor for reimbursement. That agreement is only as good as the financial stability of the vendor you're going after. So if someone found bankruptcy or didn't have any assets or money, then the whole harmless is not worth the pay.
So if they went bankrupt, you're saying that we would end up paying whatever?
Whole harmless agreements are good, and I would recommend that we have them, but I just want you all to know that they're as good as the person who is on the other side of the signatory page.
Okay, let me ask you this. I got a little confused. If you have a vendor that had insurance and obviously signed the whole harmless, and then they had a catastrophic event for $7 million, and the vendor legally went bankrupt, now who would, who would they come after?
Then that's, that would be, lawyers always go after the deepest pockets, but those, these are all extreme situations. If you had a huge judgment, and there was not enough insurance to cover, and you had to go beyond the insurance provisions, then of course, we would go to look to the pockets of the individuals. The whole harmless provision or agreement would allow us to go after the person who has the agreement with us. However, that agreement is only as good as the person who is executing that document. But these are all just extreme situations and hypotheticals.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, we have a ordinance in the book to amend Section 3-13-4 Parks Prohibited Acts Regarding Use of Fireworks, Explosive Fireworks, if somebody would consider moving in a direction.
I make, I need additional information based upon some of our other metro Atlanta communities, so I'm making a motion to table this issue.
We have a motion from District Two to table, second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling it, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Thank you. Let's move to requests and amendment of an ordinance regarding a mass gathering. Mr. Scott.
All right. This amendment is to the ordinance regarding mass gatherings, and to amend the term "special events" as used in this section shall be deemed to include automobile racing, other types of racing, exhibition plays, music concerts, and similar events conducted for profit at which there is a special need for security and crowd control. It is my recommendation that the Henry County Board of Commissioners approve the term "special event" that does not include any event at a place of business with a seating capacity less than 2,000 persons, or an event for which less than 2,000 persons are to be admitted, and Henry County Board of Commissioners, at its discretion, may waive or reduce specific persons' requirements for special events. Said insurance shall be in an amount equal to $4 million of coverage for every 2,000 persons attending the event. Henry County Board of Commissioners, at its discretion, may waive specific insurance requirements for special events. And keep in mind, gentlemen, in this one, it has a specific reading that says events that are for profit. So if it's the local Kiwanis Club or some kind of event, or some kind of sponsor putting on something like that, they do not fall under this term.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Vincent, I also came to talk to you about this one, and you come from Augusta, correct?
Yes, sir.
So Augusta has a unique event that occurs every year that a lot of us love to watch in the spring, to look at those azaleas, where it just basically turned into almost a small state. What does the city of Augusta or the area require on their mass gatherings insurance?
They're required for their mass gathers insurance is $1 million, and that's for special events only, which the masters is indeed termed a special event.
So I go back to the question asked on the previous item. If we look at the Cobb County, Gwinnett County, because they all have arenas, because one of the things, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I want quality of life. If we're going to get economic development as well as good quality of life, we have to create fun events for our citizens to do. And we don't want to create unintended consequences where we create a barrier of entry, and it might sound great to put a $4 million limit out there, because that gives you more shelter and protection, but here's, here's what happens in reality. I've talked to an insurance broker who deals with this type of insurance, is that you can get a million dollars of coverage, you can go to about any insurance carrier, and they'll offer you a million dollars of coverage. There's a lot of players in that marketplace. Once you start going to the higher extremes, they start, the insurance companies start going, why, why are they requiring such a higher level than the rest of the markets asking for? There must be something up. And there's very few players in the marketplace that want to give you $4 million, so you eventually price out the events that the community's trying to have. And that's what I'm perfectly fine with protecting the community. I just want to make sure we don't unintended wise keep out concerts, keep out all kind of great things that could really bring a quality of life to Henry County that hopefully makes our citizens very happy, but also piques the interest of businesses and other things and say, hey, Henry County's a great place to live, why don't, you know, let's keep it as attractive as possible. So I'm going, once again, I'm going to need additional information on what, unless you already have it, on what Gwinnett, Cobb, and some of these other communities that already have great event centers that I'd hope that we could eventually benchmark, what are they requiring for mass gatherings?
Now, on mass gatherings of the three counties that I did look at, we had Cherokee, Forsyth, and Cobb County did have a certain, they did have a certain ordinance for mass gatherings. At that point in time, they didn't have a number of people listed, but they did have a million dollar requirement.
So it was a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Vincent, we attract a number of youth tournaments to Henry County, and at any point when those, when those tournaments are in our county, thousands of people could occupy our field, and those tournaments bring millions and millions of dollars to, to our county on an annual basis. What would this mean for those tournaments?
Now, are those tournaments held by a for-profit organization or not?
Some of them, correct.
Some of them are. Now, as far as?
Why do we discriminate, you know, between for-profit and nonprofit?
Well, that's how the original ordinance had read.
Okay.
So I didn't change any of the language they're listing.
I might add, if it's a county-sponsored event, there's no requirements. Now, if somebody comes in here and going to make money off of it for profit, then that's the only time this kicks in. But all the soccer tournaments that's sponsored, anything sponsored, Henry County could sponsor the fireworks at Nash Farms every July, and there'd be no requirements because it'd be a Henry County sponsor. Number one, Henry County comes under a $4 million blanket, so anything Henry County sponsors is no cost. So I just thought I'd throw that in. I think that distinguishes between for profit is somebody making money and the county, which is trying to break even. Anybody else have any comments, questions? If not, we have a, we have a question, District One?
Last year, Vince, didn't we have a $2 million policy on that?
Yes, sir. On the last, on the last Nash Farms, on the last stated fireworks event, there was a $2 million policy. Yes, sir.
Good deal. Thank you.
Vincent, we had the $2 million.
Then we had some additional vendors that also had like $2 million. Is that correct?
I'm not sure about the additional vendors. I have looked at the contract for the last year's policy, and I'd be more than happy to give you a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
I've also heard that, I mean, one of the things I was researching, because mass gatherings... I've also heard that, I mean, one of the things I was researching, because mass gatherings is such a broad sweeping term, we have a lot of, it's not only charities, but there are other, you know, I was watching Shark Tank last few weeks ago, and they had a competition that was very similar to Tough Mudder. These are all for-profit entities that do these Tough Mudders as well as these other fun runs. Some of them are charities, but some of them are for-profit, like the Spartan Run and so forth. These items would fall under this as well, wouldn't they?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody have any more comments?
They require one million dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me why they require one million and we're looking at, I mean?
I've only read, I've only read just what they had listed. I didn't, I didn't speak with anyone. I can't speak with them to find out.
But just to reiterate, our maximum liability coverage is four million on all of our parks and buildings. Okay, having said that, we have a ordinance that somebody would consider moving up or down?
I'm going, once again, Vincent, I need a list of all, you know, a lot of the metro Atlanta areas and what their requirements are. I want to make sure we're in line and benchmark those guys, so I'm going to make a motion to table this until I get additional information.
We have a motion District Two to table.
Second.
Second from District One to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. So move. Thank you. Let's move down to a public hearing to receive public comments and to adopt the proposed 214 Annual Action Plan as part of the FY 212/216 Consolidated Plan. Shannon, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. As you've mentioned, this is our second public hearing to receive comment for the proposed physical year 2014 Annual Action Plan. The first public hearing was held on April 15th. The Annual Action Plan is a part of the FY 2012 through 2016 Consolidated Plan. We are requesting to consider adoption and authorization to submit the plan to HUD. Henry County receives CDBG program funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a prerequisite, the county, the county is required to submit an annual action plan for physical year 2014. The county's annual action plan describes specifically the projects that the county intends to utilize CDBG fundings to assist in carrying out the priorities as established in the consolidated plan. The plan also provides evaluation update on the FY 2013 funding. In addition to the anticipated FY 2014 funding, which is an estimated amount of one million two thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, staff also recommends the reprogramming of two hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars from FY 2013 funding. Again, this is a public hearing, and we do have a listing of the recommended allocations before you.
Anybody have any questions? Comment? I have one.
Yes, sir.
If you look on page 28, and you look at the fourth paragraph, it talks about African's Children Funds Incorporated.
Yes, sir.
This is new this year.
Yes, sir, they are a new applicant for Henry County.
Okay, then it says, "is a nonprofit which provides assistance to children and families in the United States and Africa."
Yes, sir.
Then it talks about, in Henry County, the goal would be to, would be working to reduce, now, how, is it any way that, I know this money's going to be used in Henry County.
Yes, sir.
But is it any way we can ensure that this money will be used in Henry County? What could you say, just for record, if you would just say, all this money would be used in Henry County, that would suffice to me?
Yes, sir. With our annual action plan, all of the funds proposed for award with sub recipients, whether they be a jurisdiction or a nonprofit, is to be utilized to benefit residents, predominantly those who are of low or moderate income, who reside in Henry County. We also have sub recipient agreements, which we require regular monitoring and reporting of our sub recipients, where they must document how they're utilizing the funds to service Henry County residents.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comment? This would be the second public hearing, so at this time, I'd open the floor up to anyone that would like to speak for or against this, and if you would approach the podium, give your name and address, and if you want to speak, I will set the clock for 15 minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. On behalf of the McDonough Housing Authority, I'd say good morning. I'm Chris Montesinos, I am the new executive director. I would like to recognize our Mayor Billy Copeland, who unfortunately had to leave. He had a speaking engagement with the AARP, but I will recognize our Vice Chair of our Board of Commissioners, Charlie Tomlinson, who is also the CEO of the Henry County Development Corporation, which is a 501(c)(3) that we use throughout Henry County to develop affordable housing. We are coming to you today as a new applicant for the CDBG program. Our project that we're currently undertaking is energy enhancements to our public housing development to the effect of five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Now, obviously, we're not coming to the board for, or the commission for the full amount. We believe in, you know, equal opportunity and sharing and seeking additional resources from the community as well. Now, the McDonough Housing Authority is one of two housing authorities throughout Henry County. We're the larger one with 118 public housing units. The Hampton Housing Authority is the smallest one with 25 public housing units. Now, if you think about the combination of the public housing that we provide throughout Henry County in its entirety, and you think about the population and the boom of population growth of the county you've seen in the last 20 years of 250%, what we provide is such a very marginally small amount of affordable public housing for the lowest income residents of the county and of McDonough as well. Now, when you think of public housing, we're kind of a misnomer because we actually, our population is 57% senior citizens. We've got a significant portion of our population, which is families who, the head of household has a disability, or have children or dependents with severe disabilities, as well as working class families that have to work a minimum of 20 hours a week and plus pay minimum rents. The project that we are proposing would be to add some energy enhancements to the 118, excuse me, not the 118, but we have 118, we have 79 units of public housing left to do some energy enhancements on, which would be replacement of windows and replacement of doors, which would help improve energy efficiencies. And as I mentioned in my last presentation at the last public hearing, the Housing Authority is responsible for paying for a subsidy for utilities that the residents use. That's taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that we're reallocating those savings back into improving our capital needs. We've got, we do a capital needs assessment every five years via HUD, and currently, we have a $2.2 million capital need for just the structural elements of our public housing. Now, 2.2 million's a lot of money. The Housing Authority has $240,000 in capital funds. We're not a for-profit industry. We rely on HUD for all of our subsidies, our operating subsidies, and our capital fund subsidies, and unfortunately, our annual contribution is only about $140,000 a year. So as, as our Chair had mentioned last time we did our presentation, that we have to make priorities in what we're going to be doing this year, whether we're going to be replacing roofs, whether we're going to do siding, whether we're going to do replacement of appliances, basically all these things that wear out over time. And so we are excited about the opportunity to partner with Henry County and with Mrs. Sagino at the CDBG program to apply for $250,000 in CDBG grants for these energy enhancements. I think that's about all I wanted to cover. I didn't want to take a whole lot of your time, but I do appreciate the opportunity and I hope you will consider our application.
I have a question, please.
Absolutely.
How do you get in touch with you all to apply for the housing?
How do you get in touch with the Housing Authority?
Where do they go to and get in touch with you? I had a lady call me.
Okay, well, let me give you a couple of examples. We provide public housing only in, for the McDonough Housing Authority, as well as Hampton. They provide their small amount of public housing. If you're looking at seeking assistance through the Section 8 program, for example, which is a voucher-based program, that is actually done through the Department of Community Affairs in Atlanta. So if one wishes to apply for public housing with the McDonough Housing Authority, we have specific criteria that they have to meet. Firstly, our one and bedroom, one and two-bedroom units, which are the most popular because we house a lot of seniors and smaller families. You may have like a senior and a live-in caretaker. So those, those units, we have maybe 40 units total. You would, those waiting lists are closed currently, so we're not accepting any new applications. We have three- and four-bedroom units as well, and in order to qualify for a three- or four-bedroom unit, you have to have a specific minimum number of household members. Number one, you have to be a resident of McDonough. Secondly, you have to be either elderly and disabled with either SSI or Social Security disability income. And thirdly, you would have to be working a minimum of 20 hours a week and meet all the other criteria as well. So there are very specific criteria. Unfortunately, our waiting list, we've got 500 families waiting for housing, we've got 118 units, we run a quality show, we try to keep a safe environment, there's very little turnover. But we do have some tremendous capital needs that we want to make sure that we're able to ensure and preserve what we have because we have such a small, finite asset for the, for a larger community. And if you think about the demographics of Henry County and the number of aging people, people who are on fixed incomes, you know, eventually, we're going to run out of options because not everyone has had the same opportunity to save for retirement and to be able to afford safe, quality, affordable housing as they grow older, so.
Is there an age requirement to qualify for public housing in Henry County?
No, there's not. I can't speak for the county as a whole because the CDBG program runs the, excuse me, the Department of Community Affairs runs the Section 8 program. For us in McDonough, no, there's not a minimum criteria. Just to say that we do have preferences, the preferences being, first of all, you have to be a resident of McDonough, you either have to be disabled or elderly, or thirdly, if you're, if you're not disabled or elderly, you're working at least 20 hours a week.
Do you know if there are public housing communities on the north side of the county?
The, like I said, the only two public housing authorities in Henry County would be us in McDonough and Hampton, that's it. There are private apartment units that were financed through low-income housing tax credits that do have an affordability component. If you go to our website, www.mcdonoughha.org, we have a community resource page that does list affordable senior developments. It provides private sector housing, multifamily housing that is income-qualified, as well as what our criteria are for getting onto our waiting list. And you can actually apply online, we just got it up and running the last couple of months.
So you don't know of any low-income housing communities in North Henry County?
Personally, I can say, on behalf of the McDonough Housing Authority, there is off Postmaster Drive, Woodlawn.
I don't know where that is.
I can't remember what the last name, Woodlawn Park, I believe, did utilize low-income housing tax credits to offset the financing on their construction. So they would have a certain percentage that would be allocated towards a certain area median income. But as far as specifically low income, no, I don't really have a good answer for you on that.
Because I haven't seen any either, so I was just asking a question.
They're, I mean, you think about, you know, Stockbridge and McDonough and Hampton and all of the development that's gone on in the north part of the county as metropolitan Atlanta pushes further south. You know, there are tremendous opportunities for development considering the economic recession and the fact that a lot of, you know, suburban developments never got fully built out. You know, we would, as a nonprofit agency through the Henry County Development Corporation, look at opportunities to perhaps invest in some of those developments with a lot of vacant lots and look for opportunities to provide affordable workforce housing. We would do that in sort of incorporation of having a first and second mortgage. The second mortgage would be forgivable over a period of, you know, five to 10 years, depending on how long the person lived there, and we target specific people in the community, whether they be police officers, or public safety, or teachers, or other individuals that were made to be a priority to participate in those programs. But we are not currently in the process of undertaking that. We're really, right now, focusing on what happens with this grant, what happens with our current funding, what happens with this grant. We've got, right now, $300,000 in grants pending, so from a strategic planning standpoint, we're really at, right on the verge of being able to spring forward and decide what we're going to do. And as Mayor Copeland and I have had a number of discussions, he would like to see, as part of his legacy of being mayor for 30 years, to build an affordable senior housing development in McDonough. The challenge with that is that in working with the Department of Community Affairs and applying for low-income housing tax credits, it's extremely competitive, and we've already got one development off Bridges Road that was a low-income housing tax credit property that was built in the last five years, which makes us a lot less competitive to do it again. So we have to look at other ways to leverage resources and, you know, going through the CDBG program or other opportunities. We were offered a half million dollars in SPOLOST money by the city of McDonough to go towards affordable housing. So we're looking at every option we can, and we certainly appreciate the support of the county and really appreciate our relationship.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Thank you very much.
Sir, if I could add, just in regards to the questions that you all have had, with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, as Chris mentioned, they do operate the Section 8 program for Henry County. I do have a phone number and a website for that, I'd be happy to forward to you all, but you all should be aware that that waiting list for Henry County for Section 8 is also closed. Additionally, I am aware of a few complexes throughout the county that do, that are designed specifically to assist those that are low and moderate income, and I am happy to forward you also the names and numbers of those complexes. And it's on the McDonough Housing Authority website. Thank you, Chris. Yes, sir.
All these applicants, you know, you say you got cut off, I mean, numbers only, are all the applicants that you have now, are all of them qualified?
Yes, sir.
They are?
Yes, sir. All of the applicants have been thoroughly vetted, and we went through a very similar process as last year, where it's not only myself, but three other staff members here at the county, additionally, one in the finance department, as we're looking strongly at the stability of the organizations.
Anybody else like to be heard? You've got two minutes and 23 seconds. If not, I'm going to declare that the public hearing is terminated, and we have a resolution in the book, resolution approving the FY 2014 Annual Action Plan as part of the FY 2012/216 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Somebody moved that we have, we have a motion from District One to approve said resolution. Have a district, have a motion, correction, a second from District Five by the show of his right hand, quick, and I could hear the verbal. He raised his right hand before I could hear the verbiage. I got a visual on his right hand before you got the audio. So we have a motion, have a... So we have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion, any comments, any questions? If not, indicate by the raising of your right hand. All opposed? So move.
Thank you.
Resolution requesting approval of the creation of a new streetlight district for planning. Mr. Gibbs. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. What you have before you is a resolution requesting approval of the creation of a new streetlight district in the Fairview Station subdivision located in Commission District Five off of Fairview Road. A little background, two to three months ago, Snapping Shoals EMC contacted the Planning and Zoning Department regarding the absence of payment for the security lights that were located in Fairview Station. This in turn prompted the local property owners or renters there to contact the Planning and Zoning Department to pursue the petition to create a new streetlight district so that they will have street lighting for security reasons. The Planning and Zoning Department received a petition for street lighting representing more than fifty-one percent of the property owners in the district, which is sought to be established. There are twenty-one affirmative votes out of thirty-eight total lots, and the property owners, the votes are from the property owners of the, of the Fairview Station subdivision. The monthly cost to Henry County will be ninety-six dollars, and the yearly county cost will be one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. This, this is divided by the property owners there, which will be thirty dollars and thirty-two cents assessed on the annual property tax bill.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody move, we approve the resolution. Have a motion from District Five, second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Next, have a resolution requesting the creation of a new streetlight district in Fairview Station East.
Again, same background with regards to the streetlights, I mean, the security lights and the Planning and Zoning Department being contacted by Snapping Shoals EMC. Fairview Station East, also located in Commission District Five and off of Fairview Road. The Planning and Zoning Department received a petition for streetlighting representing more than fifty-one percent of the property owners in the district in which, which is, which is sought to be established. There are sixteen affirmative votes out of twenty-nine total lots. The monthly cost to Henry County will be eighty-eight dollars per month, and the yearly cost will be one thousand fifty-six dollars, and that will be thirty-six dollars and forty-one cent annual assessment on their property tax bill.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, has a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for Fairview Station East? There a motion? Have a motion from District Five? Second from District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, have a resolution requesting award of bid for professional consultant services for the industrial interchange feasibility study. Ms. Matthews.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members. This morning, I have a resolution before you all regarding the awarding of professional consulting services for an industrial interchange, which is feasibility study. Just to give you all a little background on why we are bringing this resolution before the board, last August, 2013, the board did approve the SPOST four project list, which included partial funding for a new interchange on I-75 south of State Route 155. The Georgia Department of Transportation requires that a feasibility study be conducted prior to an interchange being constructed or an interchange being modified. So this is just the first step as part of the process to getting approval from FHWA and the Georgia Department of Transportation to actually identify an area for a interchange along one, or along seventy-five. There were four vendors that responded to the RFP, and in consultation with the committee consisting of the Planning and Zoning Department, our DOT, our Public Works Department, SPOST, Stormwater and Development Authority, that committee decided to award the professional consulting agreement to Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? I noticed you got the comparison, RFP. It, it has numerical numbers, which is ranking, but I know you look at the scope of work first, and you open that, and then the committee reviews that, and then, and only then do they open up the other package. Just out of curiosity, what was some of the, what was the other three bids? I know this one is seventy-six thousand four sixty-nine. And I know that if you look, the total score of the one that's in here, Kimball Horn is four fifty-six, and the closest one was, it seems like all of them was in line with, from two ninety-three to three thirty-seven and all of them, they just went off the scope, so.
Yes, sir. Are you asking what was the total cost for the other?
Yes, ma'am. What was the total cost for Metro Planning and Engineering?
Give me one second. Chairman, our representative from the Purchasing Department can go and grab that information because you don't have it readily.
Okay, you don't have to give it to me now.
Okay. I'll make sure that I do get it to you.
I just wanted to, the thing I'm looking at, I think Planning, Metro and Engineering is local somewhat.
That is actually, Metro Planning and Engineering is not the local firm. That is a firm that's out of Atlanta.
Okay. And then, the Moreland Outtabelli, that's, I mean, as far as talking about credibility, throughout the state, recognized credibility, Moreland Outtabelli, unless something drastically changes, has a, a good track record of, and Stentec, that's local. Is that correct? Are they still local?
I do believe Stentec, are they in?
Stentec's?
Stentec is not, Stentec is not local. Yes, they're in Macon now. And Chairman, all of the firms, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, all of them had really good proposals, and you can kind of compare with the, the points that were assessed by each staff member. And you're absolutely right. Kim Lee Horn and Moreland Outtabelli had a lot of experience as far as developing or doing a lot of construction projects. One thing that we look at is the ability to have staff members that will be readily available should we have questions, the ability to respond to the RFP that went out. And based on staff's review, Kim Lee Horn was most responsive in meeting all of our needs as far as how the proposal was prepared. You are absolutely correct in that the costs are sealed until the points have been assessed. And once the points are assessed, those costs are revealed, and then a certain percentage is assessed for a cost.
Process and what is the timeline? After the study is done, is complete, what would the state look at in order to say, hey, I think an interstate, interchange should be in this particular location? Because we already have seven interchanges within a short distance, so what would they be looking at?
Well, the timeline for completing the feasibility study is, according to the proposal prepared by Kim Lee Horn, is eight months. Once that is completed, we will submit that feasibility study to the Atlanta Regional Commission, who will then in turn submit it to the Department of Transportation Office of Planning. Once the feasibility study is approved by GDOT, they will then forward that information on to the Federal Highway Administration, who will then, through GDOT's approval, retain a consultant to begin the work to study, to study the interchange justification. Realistically, it could take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months. The City of Locust Grove about three years ago actually completed an interchange modification report, and that was about a ten-to-twelve month process. It just depends on timing. One thing that's most critical is that when we do begin the IJR process, they are certainly going to look for what we at a county level can offer to the process. We've kind of started that process by getting the feasibility study completed, but also they're going to look at how much, or how much in funds the county has available to get this project moving. I will tell you that this has been going on probably for the last eight or nine years, where we have had numerous conversations, not just at a staff level, but also with all of the property owners and stakeholders that may be impacted by this interchange. And I certainly think that it may ultimately end up being a public-private partnership where the county won't be on the hook for funding all of it, but we can certainly look to get some additional funds from those stakeholders.
So this will have to be approved by the federal government as well?
Absolutely.
So will there, will there need to be any improvements to the actual highway?
Well, what they will do, and as part of the feasibility study, that's one thing that they will make a determina, determination on. What's most important to note is that whenever you do a feasibility study, the first thing they're going to do is determine if it's feasible to construct this interchange. Certainly, I don't think that we're going to have any problems there because freight is the number one driving force behind why we're even looking to have this interchange constructed. What Federal Highway will do is also look at what you brought up, the spacing between our existing interchanges and this new interchange. That was one thing that Kim Lee Horn made note of to us during our interview process, that Henry County, a portion of Henry County, based on the U.S. Census urbanized area or urban boundary areas, classifies a portion of Henry County as urbanized. But once you get below Bethlehem Road, that portion of Henry County is classified as rural. We should be right under that cusp because if we're not, then we can certainly have an issue as far as spacing and where that interchange can go.
So how far would this be from two sixteen?
We don't know yet. That's what the feasibility study will determine. We've just asked the consultants to look at the feasibility of constructing an interchange along I-75 south of 155.
Chair recognizes District Four.
Looking at the page five of your documents, it appears that Kimberly Horn was the only company that did interviews. Was there a reason for that?
We only had four consultants that submitted proposals, and based on Kim Lee Horn with a score of four fifty-six, and there not being another firm that was within that four-hundred mark or close to that four-hundred mark, the committee in consultation with our purchasing director only decided to interview one firm.
So you don't think you might have got better scores during the interview process?
Well, and I'll be honest with you, the firms, the, the only reason a firm probably would not score well for an interview is if they don't show up, because ninety percent of the time when the firms do come, they will come and they will do a phenomenal job as far as presenting to the staff. Again, I think a lot of it was just based on scoring, and we didn't feel that there would be a great difference between our scoring if we were to bring in a second consultant firm.
The departments that, that, the person within the departments that did the scoring, who were they, by the way?
The Community Development Department, that, okay. I do recall for Community Development, I was part of that, I was Community Development. From the Development Authority, we had Leo Brown. From Public Works, we had David Simmons. From SPOST, we had Rocky Romero. And from Stormwater, we had Kim Eubanks.
So now the, the next thing is you're going to get us the actual dollar bids?
Yes, and I have those ready for you. Chairman, would you like for me to go ahead and read this?
Yes, ma'am.
With Kim Lee Horn, their amount again was seventy-six thousand four sixty-nine. Metro Planning and Engineering was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand four sixteen. Moreland Outtabelli was ninety-nine thousand five hundred, and Stentec was ninety-eight thousand five hundred.
Mr. Chair, it sounds like we got the low bidder with the best score. That would be helpful when you're doing your resolution in the future, is to have those dollar amounts in our.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would, I would have asked for that prior to that, but going through, through the package, I, I just knew that it was going to be in here and it wasn't, so I apologize. We have a comment question from District Two.
Just wanted to provide some guidance because there have been some questions asked that, I actually was on a conference call with a lot of our Development Authority. We had several board members on the phone call, as well as Bob White, who's the Director of Economic Development, we had the Legal Counsel for Economic Development, and then we had one of the largest shareholders, the head of the company, one of the largest shareholders in that area, in the industrial area. I got to tell you, we had this phone call because of a project, upcoming project, and you could sense, a sense of, of concern on that, that exit two sixteen, which is the 155, is we do have some, some issues there with, with congestion during certain parts of the day because there's a lot of industrial traffic on that road. We've got more buildings and it's, it's, it's a big concern. Just talking to this stakeholder who owns so much of the land over there, they were saying they were having some trouble marketing some of our empty spaces, and I mentioned the interchange. You could sense his hesitation at first, and then I walked him through what we had done with the SPOST and some of the things we found out about urban versus rural and how the distance should be a problem, and then told him about some conversations I've had with some of the, the higher-ups at Georgia, Geo-Georgia Department of Transportation. And I could see his wheels starting to turn, and then I even received, because I told him what I had been shared was that if we could raise thirty percent towards this interchange, which I'll tell you is no easy feat, that's, you know, it's probably coming up with close to eighteen to twenty million dollars. We've come up with five million of it. This stakeholder said that they would be willing to immediately start exploring doing a CID to see if they could also help out because this would tremendously help their property values as well as market the existing industrial property they already have in the community. I tell you, this thing is starting to pick up steam, and I understand that right now we look at this and we go, wow, we do this, it's going to take us six years to probably get this thing tied down, and we're like, man, that seems like such a smart, hard thing to do. But it's, the old adage, how do you eat an elephant? Eat it one bite at a time. We've been talking about this by your own accord, six to seven years. Just think, if we'd have done this process six or seven years, we might be scheduling a ribbon-cutting or some big ceremony afterwards instead of saying, man, why we would have, should have, could not do this. And that's why I think this is a very small investment that could solve so many of our future prob, well, current problems, as well as what we have coming. And that's what the taxpayers, and I know, we even have a committee member from the SPOST who's sitting in the audience, and that's, that's the, the vision that I think that that committee saw, as well as we want to start that process, put the line in the sand and say, we're going to be part of the solution. I just want to share that so that we could all be, know why in the world are we starting this process and paying this seventy-six thousand dollars? Because we, we recognize how important taxpayer money is.
Anybody else have any comment? Not, we have a resolution in the book to approve the professional consultant services for an industrial interchange feasibility study.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two? Second from District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you. SPOST, next, we have a resolution question approval of a budget amendment. Mr. Ron Burkhalter.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. The Henry County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution thirteen dash eighty-nine dated May seventh, 2013, transferring one hundred thousand forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents from SPOST two Mosley Park, which is account SPO two-two-zero. This was done initially due to a technical error by SPOST staff. This resolution corrects the error and transfers one hundred thousand forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents from the SPOST three Kellytown Park back to the SPOST two Mosley Park. If you have any questions?
Anybody have any comments or questions they need to ask? Yes, sir. Floor recognizes District Four.
I had several. So one is that when we, we made this transfer, we were, we were told this was SPOST three money, and wouldn't have made, wouldn't even attempted to make the transfer out of SPOST two money, knew that we couldn't do that. That's the first thing. The other thing is make sure that the people in District Four and Kellytown know that we had the funds, significant funds in SPOST four to do the entire park. This was just going to be a piecemeal, getting it started, getting us some fencing up, getting a, getting us some parking, and maybe a little bit of hard surface for some track. This was all this was going to do. At the end of the day, we've got enough funding. That's a comment, and I guess it could be a question because you've looked into it, and we've got our renderings and working on our other situations. I feel like we're going to be able to move forward reasonably soon with the Kellytown Park as we had spoke on previously. This was a clerical era. The board did not have The Board did not have any knowledge whatsoever, and if anybody has knowledge of that, they are welcome to, you know, speak it now, because we didn't know. We thought we were totally within the rights to move money from a SPOST project to a SPOST project provided we're moving capital to capital. If something's completed, just don't leave the money sitting there. Like, the fire station was 100% completed, we had some money left, I'm glad we did. We have to do these type of things on more of a regular basis anyway, because at the end of the day, we do budgets for SPOST projects. Sometimes we have money left, more often than not, we don't have enough to finish a project. So at the end of the day, we have to make those decisions to move money within that particular project, and it has to always be capital to capital, or transportation to transportation. So I think sometimes things like this get out of hand, and there's a lot of people out there that want to make a big deal out of something that's not a big deal. It was not, nothing was intentional, nothing was spent, and it was taken care of. So I do appreciate it. I may have another comment along the way, but as far as that particular moving, that one, I just wanted to be sure that we understand why we moved it, that we moved it with good intentions, and it was, there's no foul play was meant whatsoever. But some people want to make it foul play, and that's okay if they want to make it foul play, but the problem is that most of them don't really know what they're talking about when they're doing it. We moved it back, we're good to go with it. So that's all I have on that. I will be speaking on some others. I think we're going to talk about a few other things, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
A motion that we moved, a motion that we moved back.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution in the book, transferring funds from SPOST 3 Kellytown back to Mosley Park 2. We have a motion from District Four. So I have a second from District Three. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, do the same sign. So move.
Could I ask Ron a question while he's up here?
Yes, sir.
Ron, could you give me an update on, me and the listening audience, an update on Sandy Reed's park?
Commissioner, the parking lot is complete, all the striping, the bumper signage, the sod is now complete. We have out to bid the building, the 20-by-40 storage building or meeting room building. The bids are due on those on May the night, Monday, May 19th at 3:00. Once we receive those bids on the building itself, we'll need a couple of weeks to evaluate the bids, and at that point, I'll be coming back to the Board for the awarding of the storage building.
So timeframe, about 90 days to complete that building?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's reasonable.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ron.
Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. Ron, I'd like to ask you about a project in SPOST 4. It's actually in District Five, the part, the proposed park up there in Bruce Holmes District.
Yes.
Is this a water park?
No, sir.
Is this proposed park costing $12 million?
No, sir.
Can you tell me about the amenities of this proposed park?
Commissioner, we sent out the RFP to the contractors, and I'll give you the criteria of what we were looking for in the park. In the criteria, we asked for two multipurpose ball fields, and multipurpose being lacrosse, football, or soccer, where they could be used for any one of those particular events. Also included in that was the parking. Of course, the fields are going to be sodded, irrigated. We included a regional playground, which would be similar to what we have up at Mosley Park. Of course, restroom facilities, numerous pavilions that Park and Rec rents out for any events that any club or your family members want to use. We also had in there a requirement for a 30-foot diameter splash pad, which would basically encompass a 30-foot diameter piece of concrete, the slope to the middle, with water jets coming out of it, just so if you're out there, the kids are out there, so you can run around and supposedly get wet. But that's the, for the Bellamy Park, that's the criteria that we put in for building the park.
Okay. And then this news article that came out in the Henry Times on April the night, that pretty much explains pretty much everything in that.
Yes, sir, it does. Yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm going to yield the floor to District Five.
Just to give a couple of specifics, I think in SPOST, all of the Commissioners have the ability to choose what projects that they want to move forward with. That's why people voted you in. This park is not a new phenomenon. We've been talking about this park in my district for four years. There have been renderings throughout the community, so everybody has been expecting this park. The park is not just a park. The park is going to enhance the north end of the county, it's going to motivate economic development, and it's going to bring millions of dollars of revenue to our county. What I don't understand is why, in the District Three election, they're campaigning on District Five. Most people in District Three don't know anything about District Five.
That's out of order, sir.
Okay. I apologize, but, you know, if you're going to campaign, campaign on what you're going to do in your particular district, not in District Five.
No, sir. Don't use the word campaigning.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Recognize the District Commissioner from Four.
Yes, sir. One of the things that we're talking about, as far as parks is concerned, I have Kellytown Park, which was purchased, at the time, it was District Five when that park land was purchased. I inherited that purchase when the Census tract expanded and sent me all the way to Georgia 20. At the time it was purchased, there's no funding at all to do any work on the Kellytown Park. Now, we found, it was, we found money that we'd assumed part of it, we assumed all of it was SPOST 3. We've straightened that up already, so I won't go further back into that. But by SPOST 4 and by a committee of citizens that was put together for District Four to give a list of things that District Four wanted within District Four, this was one of the major points that came up. There were several others, but Kellytown being the improvements has a passive park. It won't have the ball fields, it won't have all the other stuff, but it's a passive park. It does have pavilions, it does have a nice playground, it does have restrooms, and it does have adequate parking. It also has a site for the fire station at Kellytown. The fire station is in the countywide projects, and we're trying to decide, even as we speak, when we're going to be able to do those projects. Another park project was Mosley. We had talked, and they had asked for a baseball field on the lower section of Mosley. That was one of the things they talked about, but wasn't sure we could do it, but they did want to do additional parking because of the football fields and the other things were parked out on the dirt on the road, we can't get any grass to grow, and it's a continual erosion problem. So we're trying to make some of that work, so that was part of that. I'm going to go down a few things on my list because I've had a few calls on them. The Rock Quarry Road widening project depends solely on the city of Stockbridge, and if the city's listening, the city of Stockbridge coming to the table with a fair amount of funding sources for this, because 75% of that widening of Rock Quarry Road lies within the city limits of Stockbridge. We're not going to ask them for 75% of the funding, but 75% resides in that area. The other things were a traffic signal at 138 in Mosley, where the school system went in and put the school complex, elementary, middle, and high school, all right there in one shot. Woodland, I think is the name of it. It's in my district. We had looked at an intersection improvement, basically a red light there, because we've had police officers almost get run over several times, we've had really some close calls with buses and cars, and a red light there would make a huge amount of difference. We went to Hemp Hill Road to the state in SPOST 3 with a million two or a million three to try and get the state to work with us. They turned us down. Since then, we've been purchasing some right-of-way and doing some design so that we can be ready. We have money in SPOST 4 to move that forward. There's a number of other things that I'm not going to go into with this, but each district, there's five districts, each district got $19,988,639. That is for that district, their committee approved what they were going to do, it was what they wanted to do, and I don't understand the differences when, you know, what's the difference about a park in District One, or a park in District Two, or a park in District Three, or a regional park that I have in District Four, and a park in District Five? There's, the situation is, is all five districts voted for, and what's happened is it's, it turned into, you know, everything's a conspiracy and everything else, but at the end of the day, that's what's happened, that's where we're going. I just wanted to be sure that people understood my part as far as District Four, and as far as what I'm planning to do and what the others, and I think it's highly unfair for one district to try and take on another district, talking about, you know, what they can and can't do with their funding source, because everybody voted for it, and each committee had a voice in the vote. I appreciate it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Having said that, you're excused.
Thank you, sir.
What I would like to do at this time here for the Chairman, the distinguished clerk of the county has brought to my attention that the chairman and the last vote erred. So I'm determined that error has occurred. The resolution that I mentioned while ago, it appears I asked for the affirmative votes, but I never asked for the opposing votes. And I understand we may, I recognize a hand going up after, so what I'd like to do is to go back and re-vote on, we have a motion, we have a second, and just go back for clarity is vote. So all in the favor of the previous motion, resolution to approve the professional consultant service for the industrial interchange, raise your right hand. All opposed of that motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. I apologize to everyone for making that error, and if I'm lucky, it would be the first of the day.
Mr. Chair, before you go forward, I don't want to apologize because I made an error as well. Commissioner Bowman asked me to identify the staff members who participated, and I in it burdenly mentioned Stormwater was Kimberly Eubanks. That is incorrect, it's Kimberly Tucker. So I wanted to make sure for the record that I did clarify that that was Kim Tucker from our Stormwater Department. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving down to Finance Resolution Question Approval of Investments in Georgia Fund One. Mr. Fred Alata.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. If I could, take these in a different order, and instead, number C, or letter C on the agenda, the resolution for providing a framework within it is the approval of Regions. So before I can get to the other two resolutions, the first one needs to be approved regarding other issues to go ahead and then discuss the specifics with Regions.
You only hear C?
Yes, sir.
And 14, no, what would be, 19, Finance? Does somebody move that we amend the agenda? So move. To that respect, we have a motion District Five? Second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. So we're going to hear, we changing the agenda, we're going to hear C first, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We're going to have C, A, and then B. Okay?
Before you have a resolution to provide for, first of all, the framework for the distribution of SPOST 4 and the possible later issuance of Henry County SPOST general obligation debt. Number two, the naming of a custodian for a sales tax fund, including a debt service account and a projects account, and the other for related, other related purposes. When the voters approved on November 5th to reimpose the SPOST for another six years, and they also approved the issuance of general obligation debt of the county in the aggregate principal amount up to $100,000. The Sales Tax Act requires the county segregate the proceeds of the sales and use tax and account for the proceeds in a manner that allows for such segregation. The attached resolution outlines the framework to establish a sales tax fund and a debt service account, a project account, and sub-accounts. The resolution also outlines procedures regarding the allocation of proceeds between the county and the cities, and the appropriate accounts are to be maintained. The requirement is of designating a depository and custodian of the sales tax fund is satisfied in this resolution by naming Regions Bank, who was the same during SPOST 3. I request approval of this resolution. And also, I failed to mention, I have it today with me in the audience, Jim Monacell, who is our Henry County Bond Counsel with Smith, Gambrill, and Russell. He was the drafter of this. This is a similar resolution that the Board passed six years ago with SPOST 3, again to outline the framework necessary to segregate funds, keep accounts, as mentioned earlier.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I only have one. How do we determine that Regions Bank without, how would we determine if they would be the depository?
They were in place and have been in place for the past six years with SPOST 3. We've had an excellent relationship with them during this time, during the past year, when I've been downstairs working, working.
I think we had enough. Not kidding.
Lights went out in Georgia.
Yes.
During the past year and working with them, basically, we've taken the reporting and we've improved it. They understand the county, and we understand them. Procedures and relationship with the Regions Bank works very well. I also discussed with Bill Camp of Raymond James, who works with all these custodians who we'd recommend, and he's also had very high marks and chose Regions. Also discussed with the county manager, and for the same support, and basically, those are the reasons. It's basically our relationship with them, the fact they know us, they've been doing the job, and also having at least done some homework with Raymond James, who works with these banks for this type of work.
How much do they charge? What's their fee schedule?
We'll get into that with one of the other resolutions. It's $3,000, $500 initial initiation fee, and $3,000 a year, about $500 a month.
So in your mind, is that, I know, the reason I'm saying this, ribbon cuttings and going to, doing speeches here and there, I've had several, I know two bankers approached me and gave me their card and said, you know, we'd like to compete for county business. So then I come up and I read this, and I was wondering, you know, it's just not sole source, but based on my experience in bidding, that would, to me, that would be a bidable item, and I don't, if you're talking about $500 a month, if somebody come in at 400, we probably wouldn't change, but if it's no greater than that, $500 a month, $3,000 a year, then if it's a sole source, then I just wanted to ask the question, how we got there.
I've been told by, again, speaking with Regions and Raymond James, there are very few that are really in this corporate trust business that handle and do this type of work. Handful, there may be some people, others that they're not aware of, but again, reputation-wise and having the skills and having handled this, again, high remarks to what they're doing, and of course, having worked with them the past year, and of course, having worked with the county prior to that, and the work they've done, and I can pick up the phone- the phone and call them. One of the things in talking to Bill Camp as well indicated that some of the, these corporate trust banks, what happens if you call them up, you end up having to call some other place and wait and send documents and so on. With this, I've got a representative in Atlanta, I can just pick up the phone, call, email, and within probably hours, I've got an answer if I don't get them directly when I first make the first phone call, whether it's regarding the monthly activity, the monies, or any other issues regarding the Splas program they handle.
The, we don't have, we have anybody representing the person department at this meeting? Yes, ma'am. Could, could you come up and take a question, please? And I know you're not the person director, and I'm not putting you on the spot. In your professional opinion, do you, you think this would be a bidable item?
Three thousand.
To selecting banks for Splas? Would that be, is that something y'all normally do, bidding for financial services?
We haven't done that in the past. Three thousand dollars a year, it doesn't really go to the threshold. We usually do that type of thing, but I don't know if it's something that you've already discussed with Rod.
I did discuss it with Rod, and Rod said it's not something he would be involved in as far as naming a bank.
So you're saying that, that if the board approves this, we, we'd be in good shape, we don't have to protect the bid system?
As far as, what I understood from Rod speaking with Mr. Alata, that was the case.
Okay.
I remember they, they talked, Rod is on vacation, and they did have a conversation about this.
Thank you. Now, I'll go to legal counsel. Is it's, if, if we do this, we, we won't be infringing on the bid process of something that may be bidable?
No, sir. It's my understanding this can consider professional services, and I, given what I know about what Regions or the, I equate Mr. Jagle to a trustee of sorts, so given what I know about the services that they perform, and in conjunction with the amount of this contract, thirty-five hundred dollars for the fee, the annual fee, I don't believe that we would need to bid it out.
Okay.
It, it just that we will have to bid it out. Now, whether you want to is something different, but whether or not it's mandated, no, I do not believe it's mandated.
Okay, so you're saying i, i, if the ones that vote for this, the county will not be in jeopardy at, of any point? Because this is significant, and, and I wouldn't want to approve something and then somebody come up and squeal on, on a, on a six-year program, so thank you for that. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Alata? If not, we have a resolution in the book providing for the framework for the distribution of Splas and the possibility of later issuing Henry County Splas General Obligation Fund, correction, debt, the naming of a custodian for a sales tax fund, including a debt service account and projects accounts, and for other related purposes, if somebody would consider moving in that direction.
So moved.
Have a motion District Five? Second from District One, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Now, we're moving back to A. Resolution Question Approval of Investments in Georgia Funds.
The Section 11 of the resolution just passed allows for, the state allows for investment of the sales tax funds. This resolution authorizes from the board the Regions Banks to go ahead and then deposit the monies from the sales tax fund into Georgia Fund One, local government investment pool. It covers all of the requirements necessary to ensure that we're within the guidelines of OCGA, as mentioned, and the resolution allowing such investments.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of authorizing the investments in Georgia Fund Number One by Regions Bank. Have a motion from District Two. Second from District Four. Any further discussion, all raise your right hand in the sense of favor of the motion. All opposed, so moved. Now let's move to B.
As, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Resolution Question Approval of Regions Bank Fee Schedule and Invoices.
As previously discussed, questions raised about the fees, this resolution is to approve the fee schedule as shown in the resolution. There's an acceptance fee of five hundred dollars for the six years, the annual administration fee of three thousand, and out-of-pocket seven point five percent. In all these six years that I know, we've never been charged any out-of-pocket expenses, but it is something they have obviously put in here to cover themselves. I don't know of any situation or circumstances require them to provide any other services that would require out-of-pocket expenses.
Anybody have any comments? Have a, I yield the floor to District Four.
Yeah, just clarification, earlier when you were reading the amount on the bond, you said a hundred thousand, it's a hundred million?
Absolutely, excuse me, thank you.
Just, just want to be sure that we, just for those out there that know, it's a hundred million, not a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Any more comments? If not, we have a resolution in the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of authorizing Regions Bank's schedule for fees for services and sales tax custodian for Splas IV. Somebody moving in that direction? Have a motion from District Three?
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
So moved. Next, Human Resources requests approval of health benefits for employees. Angie Soro, good morning.
Good morning. Hurry up.
So far, so good.
I have a resolution that I'm asking the board to rescind. Resolution Day fourteen ninety-four, that was approved on March the twenty-fifth. I'm also asking for a new resolution to be adopted with the following changes. The changes to the resolution is to add the broker fee for the ancillary benefits, such as life insurance, short-term disability, long-term disability, vision and life insurance, and also to add the verbiage for the broker fee for health insurance not to exceed the two percent.
Anybody got any questions? I think we already done this one. This is just for clarification, if I'm not correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I know when we approved all this, it, the, the, all this was mentioned in that paperwork. So having said that, anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to rescind Resolution fourteen dash ninety-four and adopt, approve and adopt the Henry County Employment Health Insurance Plan. Have a motion District One. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign? So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Approval of the July the second, July the eleventh, the sixteenth, the twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-ninth minutes. Now, is that, is that twenty thirteen? Okay, let, let's make that twenty thirteen. So we have a motion from District Four to approve the minutes. We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your right hand. All opposed, same sign? So moved. Next, we have public comments, citizens allowed, excuse me, to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting. All persons wish to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk beginning of the meeting. You must sign your name, address, and specify topic of which you speak, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. I only have one here, Mr. Bill Tony, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you're going to talk about public safety and employee insurance. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner and Board. I've had a lot of county employees approach me about the insurance, that somebody is going to do away with their insurance, and I just wanted to, to bring that to light and let everybody know, I don't, I'm assuming that y'all don't have any plans on doing away with the insurance, and nobody has any plans on doing away with the county insurance. Number two, the Public Safety Police Department. I met with the past sheriff down in Butts County last week, and we discussed the interstate, the revenues coming off the interstate. In Butts County, Sheriff Dean Pope led it for years and years as the sheriff down there. He has four miles of interstate. They seize funds and do, and they've got four officers that work the interstate as far as drugs going up the interstate and everything else. Those guys are trained real well to spot or do whatever they do when they stop somebody or whatever. They have four miles of interstate. They pull in over one million dollars a year. Henry County has, I think, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, twenty-two miles of interstate, and we bring in less than fifty thousand dollars a year from what I, I call the, the police department, that's what they gave me. What I would like to, like to suggest is that we get some officers trained and start looking at that avenue. With almost twenty-two miles of interstate, we need to, need to be taking a look at it. If what's known as far as in the, the traffic, the drug world, from what I understand, Lawrence County in South Georgia and Butts County are really tough. I'd like to take and make Henry County tough to go along with it. And then, and then maybe, once we get out there, it'll, and as far as the funds and everything that come in from that, it might help out our police department and our fire department, whatever. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. In response to no insurance, that's, that's new to me. I, I've never heard any board member privately or publicly talk about we was going to eliminate health insurance for the employees. So that, that right there would be absolutely unfounded. Having said that, next, we have the chairman and commissioners' comments. The chairman has no comments at this time, so I will yield the floor, and I'll start down to District Four.
No comments, sisters.
District One?
I'd like to ask Terry if I could.
Not going to put you on the spot. Okay, this, well, it's just like, a little bit out there, asking staff to come up when it, when it's a comment.
Oh, okay, well, we'll sit back down, it's fair. I just want an update on the.
No, I, I think you, you go ahead and ask a question.
I just wanted to ask Terry to give an update on the red light down at forty-two and Locust Road, since they've been waiting a long time.
We issued a notice to proceed last Monday, so the contractor should be out there, and I understand he is. First thing they'll do is put up signal poles, so that, that construction is underway, and I'd have to go back and look. I think we either gave them sixty days or ninety days to complete that intersection, probably sixty days, so the poles are already down there. I did notice that the other day when I come through. So it should go along well, so hopefully in sixty, ninety days, we'll have that up and, and install. So, so far, that one's going well.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
Before Terry says no, can I ask a question? I don't mean to skip over anybody. Terry, as you know, every year about this time, we have numerous issues with grooming our right-of-ways and our medians in the road. I don't know what it's going to take, but the medians and the right-of-ways and upkeep are terrible, and I don't think the frequency of getting around to all the districts every two months is going to, is going to do it, because I'm, I've seen emails, the other commissioners, I'm getting a lot of emails from constituents. What can we do to, to improve the frequency in which our, you know, our right, our right-of-ways and medians are kept up?
That is a good question, and, and what I have seen in the last two to three years is, in the past years that I've been here at the county, we tried to cut all the roads initially about three to four times a year. So the rotation that Commissioner's talking about, you know, we would cut about four times. That, in some areas, is just not acceptable, in some areas nowadays, as we put in sidewalks and improve some of these roads that, you know, are curb and gutter and parkways and, and this kind of thing. So last year, we did create a special crew and bought them some zero-turn lawnmowers and weed eaters and trying to take a little more, to make these roadways a little more attractive. We did not increase staff, you know, we just kind of pulled them out of what we had to do that, to try to give a little higher level of, of service there. So I think that's something in the future that we do need to look at is, you know, how can we do that? And it's even more complicated with our state routes. I just got an email this morning, as an example, from Georgia DOT, cutting their state routes. They're not even going to begin to cut them until next, starting next week, that they start cutting the state route. So for the citizens, understand that, you know, there's not only county roads involved, but there's Georgia DOT roads, which we don't have any jurisdiction over, such as one fifty-five, forty-two, one thirty-eight, twenty, eighty-one, all these roads that are under their care. So we, of course, we'll call them and try to let them know, you know, that we have citizens calling, they would like them to be cut, but that's something that we are going to try to do is, here in the recent days, is try to figure out a way that we can raise our level of service somehow or another, so.
Is there a, is there a lack of resources? Is there anything you need from the board to help increase the frequency?
You know, the, the fact remains over the last six years with the economic crunch, that DOT, like all the other departments here in the county, you know, we, we went through a time period where people left, we didn't reimburse, but we did what we needed to do, you know, according to budgets and things like that. So if we do raise this level of service, you know, we would need to, of course, add personnel and probably some equipment as well, so that's something that we'll, we'll be looking into and see if we can find ways to fund that without trying to be such a burden on the general fund.
Anybody else have any questions, all of yous at the podium?
I just want to make a comment. I'm glad to see the red light. I hit Phillips Drive for it.
Yes, sir, I think they turned that on last Wednesday, actually, I believe Wednesday or Thursday.
The thirtieth, April the thirtieth.
I think they jumped us a, a day on it, I think.
That's what the Marquis said.
I know. Marquis said Thursday.
Yeah.
I was thinking they turned it on Wednesday, but the big thing is they did turn it on, so it is working, and, and that project is substantially complete.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to yield the floor to District Three for comments, if you have any.
No.
I'm going to yield the floor to District Two, if you have any comments.
No comments.
I'm going to yield the floor to District Five, if you have any comment.
Thank you.
You don't have any? Okay. County manager, do, do you have any comments, sir?
No, sir.
No comments. County attorney, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Tomorrow, May the seventh, at six P.M., we're going to have a call meeting for the public hearing for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen proposed budget. Tuesday, May the twentieth, the, which is a regular board meeting, the, we have counsel that meeting, because it's election day, and I thought it'd be counterproductive to have a, a night meeting during the election day, so we counsel that meeting. Thursday, May the twenty-second, twenty-fourteen, at nine A.M., we have a call meeting for the purpose of adopting the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget. Tuesday, June the third, at nine P.M., and Tuesday, June the seventeenth, at six-thirty P.M., are regular board meetings. Having said that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn in executive session in accordance with the provision of OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three and other applicable laws and pertinent to, pertinent to the vice, the county attorney for the purposes of, and I understand it's going to be limited to acquisition of real estate. That's the only thing that, that I know. We don't have any personnel. We got, we got personnel issues, I don't know if it's going to be discussed at this, at this meeting. Okay, so we're going to discuss three acquisitions, and it's acquisition of right-of-way for certain streets.
Correct, Splas-related projects.
Ma'am?
Splas-related projects.
Splas, okay. Having said that, would somebody move that? Okay, we have a motion District Four to go into executive session?
Second.
Second from District Three. Any, any comments, any discussion? If not, raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed, raise the same right hand. Thank you. We're going into executive session, we shall return. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm calling a meeting back to order. Does somebody approve the, that we reconvene in public session? So move. Have a motion, district three?
Say.
Have a, second from district four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Somebody approve an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session?
So move.
Have a motion from district one?
Second.
Second from district three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Somebody move, we adjourn. So move. Have a motion, district three?
Second.
Second from district one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Adjourned.